Just to understand the process.
Yeah.
Where she's there today, tomorrow, for sure. They said, just a couple days. And then possibly Wednesday, Thursday, and then another day.
Equipment, class drop.
So, well, I admire her. I admire her and appreciate her efforts.
I never got out, I remember getting called.
You're bad at it, right?
And this lady was sitting next to me, she had like a little luggage on wheels. I thought, oh, what do you got in there? She's like, did you call her under the airport or something? It was like, I've done this before, so she had a whole bag of luggage packed with snacks. I thought, that's true. The staff that really tours, they really, they ended up sending something, we all had to go.
Yeah. See, and in my case, it was like a hundred people in the room, and it was a lot. And so they, I'm figuring, what are the odds on?
Let's call a stool bar meeting for Monday, February 22nd, 2016, to order. Roll call, please. Vandy Creek here.
Howron here.
Anderson here.
Ben Lada here.
Lauka here.
Williams here.
We have a quorum, please stand for pledge allegiance. Unpledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, need a motion to adopt the agenda, if there's no corrections.
So move.
Second.
A motion in the second. All's fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Pooled. Motion passes. And also the executive session, in accordance with Wisconsin statute 19.851F, an executive session will be held at the end of the meeting for the consideration of financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. And in accordance with Wisconsin statute 19.851C, an executive session will be held at the end of the meeting for the consideration of employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee or which body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. G, citizens and/or delegations, is there anybody here this evening that'd like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? I think it's not on the agenda. Okay, we'll move on to G2, bright lights presentation. Tammy?
Hi, this is Tammy. I'm introducing her. She is going to be presenting, talking about some of our services that we are providing kids to help get them career-ready for leaving high school.
Hi, I'm Tammy Duranbach, and I do most, I'm a teacher, but I do most of the transition for our students with disabilities at the high school. So I just kind of put together a little overview. Um, first, huh, went too far here. All right, first of all, why are employment transition services important for our students with disabilities? Um, there's a big initiative in the state to get our kids with disabilities out working in the community, exploring jobs, getting them jobs that will fit with their career interest areas. Um, so we're working with the Department of Volk Rehab and the Wisconsin Workforce Development to really push these kids by their junior, senior level, getting them the work experience they need. Um, and it's also to prepare them to become independent, productive members of a diverse workforce, um, and give our students purpose. And once they are connected to, you know, a job, you can do a lot of things in the classroom to keep them motivated. Um, these are kids that usually struggle, um, in the classroom for the most part. Um, so, once you can get them a job and they can see that connection, hey, I do need math, I do need reading to be successful, it really helps, too. Um, the first class that we offer is during their junior year. It's, um, and I put in parentheses, "career education," because we're changing our name to kind of meet with the rest of the state and how they, what they call their classes. Um, but currently, it's still called ASAP One, um, which stands for Ashwabanon Career Education Program. But some of the main things that we focus in on there are self-determination, self-advocacy, career exploration and readiness, diversity training, post-secondary education options and research, resume writing, cover letters, and then getting them registered with the Wisconsin Workforce Development website. When we get the kids registered for that, they seem to get, you know, jobs, like decent paying jobs. So some of our seniors, um, are, are getting calls, and it's kind of neat because they, they put their resume on and the employers can actually contact them, so it's kind of neat. Um, then the second class that they take during their senior year, um, would be the, the second one, it's called on-the-job training. Um, the students work independently, the employer takes full responsibility for their training, um, and monitoring the students' work progress. Um, myself, um, I consult with the employer, and then I do periodic checks. Sometimes they're on the job site, I just show up while they're working, um, and do an evaluation, and then, um, and the kids are aware of that, that I, that I'm going to be popping in here and there. And then the students meet with me independently as needed, so as issues arise. Um, ASAP two goals, this is to prepare, the biggest thing with ASAP is, is that we, again, want to get them in their, um, fields of interest, okay? So I kind of put three different examples. Right now, we have one student employed at PDQ. He's, he's a senior, um, he's a supervisor right now, and he was really excited because last week they gave him the keys to PDQ, so he was pretty like, very excited about that. His plan is to job, or to attend NWTC and major in business. So this job is really helping him, um, get the experience he needs. And then we have another, um, student, um, she secured an internship with the New Zoo, and her plan is to work with animals as a zookeeper, to manage her own farm, and she's already taken classes at NWTC for farming, um, so just another really neat opportunity, um, getting her with her field of interest. And then we have another student that was, um, probably two months ago, employed at Experience Fitness in the Childcare Center, and she's going to attend NWTC for childcare next year. So those are just, we want to do more of that. Um, you know, instead of just getting them a part-time job at a grocery store, if they're not interested in working at, at a grocery store, working in business, you know, getting them somewhere where they really do want to, um, make a career out of it. And then we have the ASAP Three program, which is, um, work experience. This is more supportive employment, so these are for kids with significant disabilities. Um, the school professionals, so myself and Ed Associate, and Ed Associate, take full responsibility for training the students on the job through job coaching. Um, and then students in this class, we've also been lucky enough to work with, we're working on this autism project, um, through the Wiseman Center in, uh, at UW-Madison, and they're giving us a curriculum so that we can work on self-determination and self-advocacy with this group of students, too. Um, but again, um, the kids, you know, they receive, part of their, um, thing is paid work experience and part of it is volunteer, um, so it's kind of half and half, but it's working more on those basic skills. Um, and I put just, um, obviously, the goals are to, for these kids, though, to acquire the work readiness skills, they need to work independently on the job, and, um, with this group, they're a little bit more harder, they're more difficult to employ sometimes. And what's cool, the Department of Volk Rehab right now is getting involved with our high school students at a younger age, and they have, 15% of their budget right now is focused on high school students, um, and they can pay for part of the funding to train these kids. So it's kind of an incentive to the employer to hire them, and then to help train them, and then with the understanding that they will, you know, employ them after and pay their wages. Um, and then just to obtain individualized competitive employment in the community. So, some of our ASAP Three students right now, um, we receive 16 hours a week through Goodwill, and that's a program participant-type training, and myself and Peggy Merzynski, um, we do the job coaching there. Um, that's paid work experience. And then we also, we did a term, we're doing a term at Restore right now, and then we did one at Children's Museum, New Zoo, and the Green Bay Wildlife Sanctuary, we're going to do in the spring. And then our ASAP Two students, most of them are employed either at PDQ, McDonald's, Tunder Lodge, Richards Heating and Cooling, Chuck E. Cheese, Experience Fitness Childcare, New Zoo, and Romo Incorporated. So those are some of the businesses where, um, higher functioning, right now. And then I just put a couple different pictures, um, two of our students working at the New Zoo, um, we have, um, the group Assembly and Packages at Restore, and then we have a couple working at Goodwill, Sarah and Alyssa, and then Teresa is one of the employees there. What's cool about Restore, they really get the kids integrated with the other employees, so even though we're responsible for the job coaching, they a lot of times take the kids and, they're like, you go, you know, over here, we're going to take them now, and so they'll work with them on their own. So, any questions?
I know, I just heard about some of this, uh, my daughter, that's, uh, Human Resources, and they're working with some of these kids from, in other school districts right now, and, uh, she asked me about it, and I didn't know exactly what ASAP meant.
Well, guess what, I didn't know for probably the first five years I worked at the high school. And I never really wanted to ask because I was too embarrassed, but...
So I'll give you another contacts that, uh, local, uh, somebody in town here will take some more employees for you.
Cool. Yeah. Um, yeah, I think there's a lot of employers in our area, I mean, we're lucky because we have this whole area around us of businesses, and I think it's just getting out there and making those contacts and things like that, so.
So what's the students' school day look like? I'm trying to envision how this works statistically.
Works. Um, the ASAP Three kids, they go from 12, we leave at 12:30, and then we usually leave, you know, like when we're at Goodwill, we leave about quarter after 2:00. Um, so their whole fourth hour, and that's the nice thing about being on the block schedule at the high school, they have a good period of time, a chunk of time, every day that we can go out. The kids in ASAP Two, um, the, on the, the kids that, um, work more independently, they are released at 11:00, and they, those are seniors, and it's kind of like co-op, they do the school-to-work thing, so they go to class in the morning, and then they have their job in the afternoon. So, yeah.
What about transportation, then? How do they, how does that work?
We, the ASAP Three kids, we transport, um, through our special ed with our vans, and then, um, the ASAP Two kids, those kids, most of them drive, or they take the city bus. Um, so, yeah. Anybody else?
Looks like a great opportunity.
Yeah.
It is, it is good. It's, and I, I said it really like helps when they get to this age and they can get a job, because you really do see them starting to make those connections, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. It consists of the minutes of the regular meeting, held on Monday, January 25th, the minutes of the executive session, held on Monday, January 25th, schedule checks written in 119 to 217. Uh, staffing, the retirement request of Deborah Hocken from the part-time head cook position at Valley View, the new hire of Jason Hyde, the part-time .5 FTE night custodian at the high school. Um, we got four co-curricular contracts, and I believe that's it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion?
I just have a question on co-curriculars. Is there a standard set on what's required, on how often the students need, or is that just open to each area? As, you know, as we're adding new ones? I'm just curious if there's parameters to it.
Well, you know, there's, there are length, length of seasons for co-curriculars, really vary depending upon the activity.
Yes.
If you want to use some examples, Dirk, go ahead.
Yeah, it really, it really depends on the kind of activity, as, as Brian said. Some things, um, are very limited to a short intense season, things like one-act play, you know, there's a very short season for it. Other things, like some of the student support groups, you know, SAD, um, our GSA Club, things like that, they tend to meet more infrequently, but throughout the whole year. Um, so it really depends on, uh, on, on the scope and purpose of, of the activity.
Any other discussions? Okay. All's fair, motion please say aye.
Aye.
Pooled. Motion passes. Aye, super tennis report, Ryan.
Okay, um, first, under just the building project update, fundraising. Fundraising, I think we're approaching around $900,000 in fundraising towards the, um, project, so I don't have anything more new to add than last, last month. I would say, though, in the auditorium, I was there on Friday, they poured now the entire area where all the seating is, they pretty much finished pouring all the concrete in the main area of the auditorium, so it's pretty impressive to see if you get a chance to go in there. Having to do with the pool, they are now starting to dig the cavity in the pool, they have the other, the locker rooms are pretty much enclosed, and they're throwing a lot of heat into those locker rooms, so we're at the point now where the pool works is in there and really, they were basically just chopping the surface last week before they can actually, you know, remove that cavity that they have to carve out for the pool area. But it's pretty exciting to see us all enclosed, and we'll see a lot of things happening more quickly now with, with all those projects, and they're still telling us everything's on schedule, and I still tease them about their October date really meaning to be September 1st, but they aren't going to show that hand until, until we get there, I'm sure. Things can happen, but we're hoping they're going to be ahead of schedule, it would be ideal if they could be ready for all of us at the beginning of the school year. Couple of other just highlights, and I honestly, I have too many to just list at this meeting, you're going to see me sharing a number of other highlights in the board update. Um, but I want to just start by congratulating our Parkview Mathletes, we had three Parkview Mathletes that scored in the, um, top 10. They were students, uh, 10 out of a total of 119 Mathletes. That's around all of northeastern Wisconsin, and with those great scores, they earned the privilege to participate in a head-to-head countdown in the round of regional math counts. So Brady Whittick ended up in ninth place, Logan Chart seventh place, and Emma Fisher moved from eighth to sixth place, so we want to congratulate all our middle school Mathletes. Also want to remind everybody, and I would assume that everyone in this room isn't going to want to miss this next event here. Taste of Ashwabanon, just a reminder, it's on Wednesday, March 16th. If you were really smart, you buy an advanced ticket from this gentleman right here, or you can buy a ticket at the district office. The discount price would be...
At the high school office.
At the high school office, excuse me. Discounted price is $25, or $35 at the door. Again, that's March 16th. Again, that will be at Stadium View from 6 until 9:30. Congratulations to our dance team, we placed fourth at State in Division Two. Um, we also had boys swim, captured 10 sectional championships in a row, and boys took seventh place at State. We had various students place, including Eric Van Dyke, Mark Teskey, Max White, Daniel Jablonski, and Joe Stone. Wrestling, we just hosted that recently, uh, hosted sectionals, we had four students qualify, and Fernando Conrado took second in the 106-pound category, and Daniel Cole also took third, he lost in a wrestle back, it sounds like, in the third decisive match, it was an overtime match, but congratulations to Danny. I also want to wish the Destination Imagination teams good luck. This is that Saturday that the high school will again look like a beehive. We will have teams from all over the state, equipment and apparatus. I want to thank the parents in advance, and all of the advisors, and all of the paper donors throughout the community to help support Destination Imagination. That will go on all day this Saturday. Nice work also to Mr. Singer, and I don't believe he's here tonight. Our students collected over 2,000 pairs of shoes, that's a thanks to Mr. Singer, to our community, to the optimists, to PCM. C.D. Smith jumped in, El Tusa of Green Bay, the dance team, the football team, staff, students, and, um, all of our high school, and other schools beyond Ashwabanon ended up contributing to this. So hats off to everybody that contributed to 2,000 pairs of shoes. I'm wondering what it smells like at the high school. Congratulations to 66 teachers and one team who were nominated for our Golden Apple, the Golden Apple Distinction, and we had three identified as teachers of distinction. I want to specifically congratulate Chris Scog, Cassie Burns, Francine Cook, and if, if you didn't know that, this year there's a different system where a rubric was created by a countywide committee, so one individual is advanced from schools of 750 can send one, where schools of, you know, more than 750 can send two, there's a formula now. So it's changed a little bit, and it's my hope that more staff members will really consider the process. I think they made the actual process for teachers more user-friendly. I mean, so if you're nominated, I hope you and your peers in the future will really consider, um, going to that next step. That was our hope, that more people would be willing to continue with that process, and that hasn't been really the case in, in some cases in the past. Also want to congratulate the Parkview staff, again, they were chosen to receive over $1,000 for the Fuel Up the Play Initiative. That just, it's another great activity to increase awareness of nutrient-rich foods and physical activity opportunities, so thank you, Lois, thank you, Parkview, and Chris, and Brian, and all the staff that contribute, and for taking the initiative again to apply and go after those funds. That's not something we take for granted, either, that's more time on the plate to do those things. And then I said I have a lot of other items I'm going to list. I had so many things that people shared with me, we could go on for quite a long time, and it's a neat problem to have, so I'm sorry if I didn't recognize some of the other areas, they will be put up in lights in our board updates, so you'll see.
Okay, good. Any questions, or Brian? Okay. Uh, move on to G1, drone policy. That's what this UAV policy is, I mean, Nick's not here to go over it, I mean, we've, I've read through it, you understand what it is, I don't know if you...
Mark Duff's doing it.
Mark, Dirk?
I can, I can answer any questions that you would have.
Are we getting a lot of this? A lot of people asking, I mean, they're, I know they're becoming popular, but, uh...
Jamie, are you talking about?
No, let's get ready for the next one.
I'm yelling out. I look so in charge there. Um, we're starting to get some requests, um, especially from some of the professional photographers who, who come to a lot of events and take pictures. If any of you happened to go to the East of Pier football game, there were actually two drones flying around, um, so it's, it's something that's in the area, um, that's, that's beginning to impact us. Nick has gotten a few requests, um, I, I know of at least one, and I think there's another one that he's gotten. And this is just an attempt to get out ahead of what I'm guessing, we're guessing, is going to become more and more of a, of a request, more and more of a way of filming events in the future. Uh, there aren't any other school districts in the area that have a policy like this. Again, we'd rather be on the leading edge of that than, than the following edge. This is a policy that the WIAA kind of drafted, using some legal expertise and, and some of the, what is it, um, Wisconsin state statutes about privacy, and some other things about FAA compliance and airspace and things like that, so they did some of their legal work there, and, um, so that's what they're looking at.
Doesn't have it struits in Niola, I wonder if it'd be wise to submit it to them, because they might want to use it as a base for many schools, and then we'd be, have their legal expertise.
Good suggestion. I also wonder, with the FAA, are there regulations with us being so close to the airport? But that's something we can take up after this meeting, I, that just hit me, I thought there was a five-mile radius, but maybe I'm making that up.
Good question. I don't know, but I know that Nick made some reference to it in a conversation, so I'm guessing that, that's at least on his radar screen.
Okay, okay, very good.
It doesn't mention it in the policy, so we'll just talk about it. Well, if ever we submit this to Niola, you want to bring it back, I mean, I didn't see anything in there that, and I don't know what to look for in a drone policy, I guess.
Niola does not have a drone policy. I contacted, but they don't have one.
They might want one, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's a sad policy.
Know what I mean? I don't know.
Um, there wasn't an interest.
No? Okay.
They weren't interested?
There wasn't an interest because it hasn't run through the legal system yet.
Okay.
One of the folks at, at the WIAA thought that either WASB or WASDA had at least had some conversations about school districts that want to start looking at drone policies. I just heard that in a conversation this afternoon on the phone, so I don't know which, and I didn't do any follow-up yet.
Let me fish that out, too, I can help you with that.
Okay.
The only thing I thought of for reading it was, who knew?
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't, yeah, hadn't thought of it.
Okay, well, this is only a first reading, so we can bring it back, and, uh, we'll see what, uh, what these other groups think, I guess. Uh, number two, reading recovery update. We've got a whole bunch of people, it looks like, up here today.
Hi, everybody. Sure, I'm Stacey Schubel.
I'm Wendy Nalik, I'm at Pioneer School.
Chris Channing.
I'm Doug Patterson, I'm over at Valley View.
And we're going to just update you, um, a couple of years, about two years ago, Heather White and Jill had brought reading recovery initiative to the reading team, and we had a lot of questions in the beginning, and we're so fortunate to have gone through the process of being trained as reading recovery teachers, and it's an endless journey, which is an incredible experience for us. Reading recovery, we each work with four students, one-on-one for 30 minutes, and it's very intense, it's one of the most intense interventions that you can have. It's aimed with, aimed at first graders, and we look at kindergarten, our kindergarten data that comes in, and we look, take teacher recommendation, and we look at our district data that we collect in the beginning of the year, and we take a pool of our most needy, at-risk students in the area of reading and writing, and we do eight additional assessments with them as well, to make sure that we're choosing our most needy students at that time of the year. They stay with us, on average, from 12 to 20 weeks, it's kind of over at 20 weeks, and then we need to decide what would be most appropriate for that child at that time. We work closely with the classroom teachers, which has been an incredible learning experience for us, as well as them, along this journey. Um, it's very strong, it has a lot of strong research behind reading recovery, and that one-on-one time allows us to individualize those lessons for each of those students, not one of ours is mirrored across all four students at any time, where with the theory behind that we've learned in our practice, we can adjust to what the student's showing us right then and there, so it can really accelerate their growth as a reader and as a writer.
So our journey began a year and a half ago. Um, we actually, the four of us, started training in August of 2014. We spent a week long learning about the theory behind reading recovery, and then every Tuesday during the school year, we spent three hours in class observing reading recovery lessons, learning the procedures, analyzing our own teaching, thinking about our students, and how our new learning was going to help them. Um, the four of us have quite a bit of teaching experience, literacy is our passion, that's why we're on the reading team, we all have our master's degree, we're reading specialists, um, and in spite of all that learning, I can honestly say that last year, um, being trained as a reading recovery teacher was the most intense, overwhelming, and life-changing year. Basically, reading recovery requires us to create individualized learning plans for each of our students. We know their strengths, their interests, their weaknesses, but we focus on their strengths. What do they already know, and how can we build on that? How can we help them accelerate so they can meet or exceed grade-level expectations? Um, as you know, reading is pretty complex, there's a lot of components to it, but reading recovery reminded us to step back, think about what are the behaviors that our students are doing in reading and writing that we can change in just a week, so they can continue to accelerate. Um, it's important for us to think about the language we use when we teach, are we being thoughtful and clear? Are we consistent, making sure students are hearing the same message? Do they understand what we're asking them to do? If not, we need to go back, and we need to explicitly teach what it is we are looking for them to do. As Wendy mentioned, we're continuing to grow and learn. Reading recor, reading recovery requires and provides continuous professional development. Every four to six weeks, we meet with our reading recovery team to, again, observe lessons, dig deeper into procedures, analyze our own teaching, and think about our students. We're always thinking, what are we doing to support our students? How are we helping accelerate their learning? How are we helping them become more confident and independent as readers and writers? Finally, the big key... Finally, the big key from our training was collaboration. First, we collaborate with each other in our training class. We collaborate with parents. We're always asking them, inviting them into our classrooms to observe, which leads to great conversations about what they can do at home to support their child. We collaborate with our colleagues. Our classrooms are always open, so we've had a lot of people come and observe lessons, which has led to great conversations, where we share what we're doing, what we've been learning. The classroom teachers tell us what the students are doing in their classroom, and we're working together. So we're using clear, consistent language, and that we have same, the same goals. And we collaborate with our principals. Kurt, Pete, and Andy have all observed lessons. They've all been in classrooms, so teachers can come and see our lessons, and we're so very thankful for all their support. This new training that we had, this new knowledge, doesn't just impact our Reading Recovery students, it affects everything we do all day. It affects our coaching, it's changed the language we use when we meet with teachers, it impacts our intervention groups, not just first grade, but all our grades, from kindergarten to fifth grade, and it influences the staff development that we've been part of this year.
Since Reading Recovery began in the United States in 1984, more than 2 million first-grade students have received Reading Recovery lessons, and tens of thousands of teachers have been involved in the year-long training. In addition to the four of us, there are also three Reading Recovery-trained teachers in our primary classrooms here in Nashwabanon. Nationally, of the students who have completed the intervention of Reading Recovery, 75% reach grade-level standards. These are pretty amazing results, considering that Reading Recovery always starts with the lowest 10 to 20% of our students. This evaluation, or this, excuse me, this evaluation evidence is backed up by extensive scientific studies that demonstrate that Reading Recovery works. Not in isolation, but as part of a comprehensive district literacy plan. It works in conjunction with a solid curriculum in place that is taught using best practices in literacy. Reading Recovery is one piece of the intervention plan for our district, but we have other literacy interventions available through our RTI framework for our kindergarten through eighth-grade students who need them. We'd like to share a sample of some of the assessments we use with our Reading Recovery students. The first task that we have is the writing vocabulary task, which shows how the child is building a personal resource of words that he can write in every detail. The child is asked to write as many words as he can in a 10-minute period. These examples are from the child, from a child at the beginning of lessons, and then after their program is complete. At the end of a Reading Recovery intervention, this student was able to write more than 50 words in 10 minutes. Many were high-frequency words, and words that she could use to learn new words. The next assessment is called the Hearing and Recording Sounds in Words Task, and it's used to determine how well a child represents sounds in letter form. The teacher reads a short sentence or two for the child to write, and the score represents every sound recorded accurately. When this child began Reading Recovery, he was asked to write the sentence, "The bus is coming, it will stop here to let me get on." As you can see, he represented a few sounds in the words correctly, and wrote the word "stop." At the end of his Reading Recovery lessons, you could actually read this child's story as the 37 sounds are recorded accurately. Another important task is a record of text reading. The child reads books that increase in levels of difficulty. As you can see, at the beginning of this child's lessons, he was able to read a Level 2 book with a single line of text. And after his lessons were complete, he was able to read a much more challenging Level 16 book, which represents the grade-level benchmark for the end of first grade. The RTI Center would report this type of growth as an example of accelerated learning. Now we'd like to look at some of our local results. Last year was our training year, and you have the results from that year in our site report that was completed in June. This slide, however, articulates the results from our first-round students from this school year. As Wendy mentioned, we each have four students that we work with, so we had a total of 16 first-round Reading Recovery students. This year's first-grade class is higher academically than our typical groups, but we are encouraged that we, as we hone in on our skills as Reading Recovery teachers, and continue to see the impact in our classroom instruction, we intend to make a concerted impact with more challenging groups that are surely to come. With 88% of our students reaching grade-level benchmark, as reported by the classroom teachers for our mid-year assessments, was very encouraging news, for sure. We see that it has a positive, strong response to, the students have a strong, positive response to their classroom instruction, along with the addition of Reading Recovery as an intervention. This year, we are at full implementation as a district, as all first-grade students who need Reading Recovery received it. This allows us to coach in classrooms, ensuring our students are transferring their active, engaged learning into the classroom environment. We have also been able to give additional support to our second-grade students, who have more needs than our current first-grade group.
As it's, as it's been mentioned already, there's a lot of long-term benefits as well. All the kids that we work with make incredible progress. If not, reaching that benchmark after 20 weeks, they definitely have made great strides in their, their reading. And, long-term benefits for us as a district, putting that, those, that time and investing in those early reading behaviors, and really making sure that our students are strong and have that foundation of reading, we are finding fewer referrals going into specialized, and we hope to see that, that continue along the way as well. Another, another great benefit for our district is that we're, we're developing our leaders, our literacy leadership skills, and really going in-depth with what we're learning, and we're able to ripple that into the classroom with classroom teachers. We share it with other people on the reading team that haven't gone through the whole process. They're right there, learning along with us, and collaborating with the classroom teachers. We're educating families that come in, parents that come in and work with us, and as they have other children coming through, they're learning how to read and how to write with their child at home. And so there's a lot of great, long-term benefits that we're really seeing across the board. We may be working with only four students, one-on-one, through Reading Recovery, but my practice with them has influenced all the other students that I work with when I go into a classroom, small group interventions, when I talk with classroom teachers about an individual student. They change their language within a guided reading group, which is influencing all the other students in there as well. So we're really affecting more, really influencing more than just those 16 kids that we worked with through Reading Recovery.
So basically, why? How did this get brought up? And if you think back, a couple of years ago, we had a literacy audit, and one of the recommendations was Reading Recovery. But beyond that, it was also a recommendation that we have coaching. We have a wealth of knowledge now, and so what we're hoping is, we can come to you as board members and realize that we have a lot, we have a lot. We want 100% of our kids to be reading at grade level. But we can't do that if we just keep it housed and do our bits and pieces here. Because if you think about anything that you want to learn, when you want to learn something, you have to play around with it. And I think of like, technology. When I see something that somebody does, I just go to my son and say, "How do you do that?" And he'll like, "Oh, you just go to your settings, and you go here, and you go here." Because he's working with that all the time. And I think that's the pleasure that we have, is we're working with it all the time. But we need to honor what teachers need, to learn and to grow together, to try things out, and that coaching piece would be a prime example of what, that, that could be a next step for us, to actually get into classrooms and have them watch us, and then have them try it, and then get that feedback. So I think coaching is our next step, that I'm hoping we'll go towards, but it's also that idea of providing staff development time. I sent you a very late email this afternoon, just kind of outlining some thoughts about what our staff development has looked like in the district, and I'm going to plead with you over and over again, that you really take the time to seriously consider what we can do as a district to make ourselves better. We do want 100% of our kids reading at grade level, but we can't get there if we give teachers little bits and pieces of this big picture. So, those would be some of the recommendations, is that, and then also that we keep this going, and just keeping, providing that staff development for our teachers.
Well, actually, we're not quite done yet. We've given you a lot of information, a lot of data, but sometimes the data doesn't show the whole picture. It's some of those intangibles, the things that you can't see, that can have the greatest impact. So we're going to end with a video. First, we have to thank Deb Patterson for the ideas, and Matt Schreider, who put everything together for us. We owe him a big deal. But we're going to show you how, in just the past year and a half, Reading Recovery has had an impact on our colleagues, our students, and their families.
I am a reader.
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 Hi, I'm Megan Kinsley, I teach second grade at Valley View, and thank you for taking the time to hear what I have to say about how Reading Recovery has affected my students and myself as educator. This year, I had the opportunity to work with a student who experienced Reading Recovery in first grade. They were able to fill the holes and lay the foundation for him to become successful. They just missed him having a first grade, and he's in lovely progress since then. He came into me with the skills needed, and he is a lot impressive reader. I feel like Reading Recovery really, really impacted his learning, like the most basic skills that we as a teacher couldn't give to. This year, I also had the chance to observe a Reading Recovery lesson, and I cannot tell you how much it has impacted me as a guided reading teacher. I've changed the structure of my lessons, I've changed the prose and the words that I use, to be so much more specific to the skills that my kids need. Thank you for giving our kids and our staff the opportunity to work with Reading Recovery training.
I am a reader.
I am a reader.
I am a reader.
Teaching students to read is a complicated task. Most students succeed in the small-group guided reading structure that our classrooms run. However, our neediest students need more. They are lacking confidence and strategies that are needed to continue to make adequate reading progress. They need one-on-one, explicit instruction, guidance, and support. Without the Reading Recovery model, these students would still receive good classroom instruction. However, they would most likely always be trying to catch up with their peers. This feeling of not being a good reader is detrimental to young students. Since reading is crucial in all academic areas, it also causes them to doubt themselves as an overall learner in school. The past two years of having the Reading Recovery model in place, I have been astounded by my students. I have had a total of four students participate in Reading Recovery. Throughout the Reading Recovery program, students were building and more confidently using strategies to help them read. They were not only catching up with their peers, they were passing them. They were thinking and interacting with the text. They were smiling and enjoying reading, because they finally felt like they were good at it. The importance of self-esteem and confidence is not easily measured. It not only transpires into a level of reading, but is also made their overall attitude for school and learning change. I am a huge believer and advocate for this program and its positive effects on students.
I am a reader.
I am a reader.
I am a reader.
Reading is such an invaluable skill. And I've had the privilege over the last two years, with six Reading Recovery students, specifically this year, three of them, all received Reading Recovery and were dismissed early. Came in to first grade with very limited reading skills, very basic reading skills, and with the one-on-one, one-on-one instruction that our Reading Recovery professionals provide, they are now all reading above grade level.
People love to watch TV every day. The girl ran, runs to the television, and barks at it until Danny turns it on. She loves all of the shows, but she loves dog shows the most.
Hi, I am Missy Miller, and I teach over at Pioneer. I was a Reading Recovery teacher for nine years, and it has truly impacted my teaching. It has taught me how to be an observer, look at data, analyze, reflect, and really design lessons based off of student strengths. But above all, I feel as though Reading Recovery gives opportunities to those struggling readers to catch up to their peers. Research shows that if students don't read successfully by third grade, then they're four times less likely to graduate high school. So that's a huge issue. But the heart of the program is truly that professional development, where teachers, as a cohort, get together with a teacher leader to discuss theory, strategies, prompts, look at data, and really get outside of that comfort zone, where you go behind the glass and you work with the child, and you receive feedback from your colleagues to better your teaching, and really just learn more and grow more. It's continuously refining your practice to meet the needs of those individuals that are in the classroom, working with my whole classroom. I'm able to, it's that pebble-in-the-pond effect, where you just, this best practice. So I'm able to work on prompting and strategies, and look at data, and analyze what my students need in all areas, not just in reading, it's in writing, and it's in math, and it's in every curriculum area that I make adjustments. The biggest thing, I feel, the most important piece of it all, is really that collaboration with the classroom, teaching for transfer. We know students get compartmentalized, but when you work with the classroom teacher or other teachers, you're really looking for that seamless instruction.
Said the pig, "There's a hen on me." And the pig said, "Yes, but the hen just sat." I am a reader.
I am a reader.
I am a reader.
I'm a reader.
We are readers.
Yeah!
We are readers.
Yeah!
Questions? Sorry.
So when you're asking for this to continue, when is that, how is that decision made? Is that on the, is that not going to continue?
Oh, it is going to continue.
Oh, okay. All right.
And I know, we've invited lots of payment districts in, Brian has come in. If any of you are ever interested, all you have to do is let us know, and we'd be happy to have you in. It's truly something to watch, because you can see the light bulb clicking daily, you know, and they just, woo, all of a sudden, they got it, and like you said, the confidence is just, it's a good.
Is there a summer school component to this?
There's not.
There could be.
We talked with our teacher leader last year, and said it could be something that was extended into the summer school, the four weeks of summer school, but we would have to put it together and design it, but it is a possibility. Because our, sometimes our second-round students don't get a full program, because it's up to 20 weeks long. So that means when our second-round kids come in, there's only about 16 weeks left in the school year. So that would be something for us to look forward to, and perhaps... and they really need the help because they didn't get it at their old school in first grade, where, where does that kid?
Jay, that's an excellent point. And we're really fortunate right now because of our, and Cheryl Stathis is here tonight, and she's our internal coach for RTI. And we have other interventions that are in place for those students who come in who maybe didn't get what they needed. And so, we had 20 new students in January, just at Valley View alone. So, we recognize that that is an important piece, which is why we value our district's intervention plan for all of our students K through eighth grade.
So, is, is four the correct number for each of you?
For reading recovery, that's, would be your max. It would service. It's, it's just so intense that the whole idea of looking at each child as their individual reader, to, to ask a teacher to do any more than that is just something that they, you know, long ago decided that that was the limit, so.
It's very intense for the student as well as for us, the amount of data we need to track and analyze every day and to plan that individualized lesson for them and make sure that it's, you know, so specific to make sure they're really working with and untangling all of their miscon, you know, perceptions with reading.
So, I'm gonna put you guys totally on the spot. If you look at our decision as a board with staff development, taking five days of contact away for one of these children, but adding more staff who would understand reading recovery, what would serve the student better?
I think, well, go ahead.
I think ongoing staff development, I think right now, the frustration that we have, especially, you know, as a, as a district, as a class, former classroom teacher, as being on the reading team. When I first started, we had almost every month, we had a staff development day. You were able to, you know, take in information, have that reflection time, play around with it, as Chris had alluded to. You have to have time to play, but then to come back and talk about it again. Our staff development, and Stacy had talked about what, what background we have in reading, we went through an intensive training the year last year. And even our second year going through, I am learning every time we attend these classes. And we have one tomorrow, and I'm just already looking forward to what can I take away and try with my students. And to bring, you know, I have this student, I'm struggling with this, am I missing something? How do I move that child forward and have those collaborative conversations? We don't have time during the day to have that with classroom teachers. You know, their, their day is busy, our schedule, you know, doesn't always coincide with the opportunities that they have during the day that might be free, and then after school with meetings and such. So, that time, really honor that time and that staff development piece ongoing, rather than a bunch of days in the beginning of the year, maybe one here and at the end, and have all these things coming at teachers. We need to have a plan. We're gonna start here, this is what our year is gonna look like. And when I started, we had a staff development council where we worked on that. And I just, I get overwhelmed when you sit for a whole day and you take, take in all this information, it's like, okay, we'll see you three months from now. You can't do that. We need to have that constant collaboration with classroom teachers.
Because one of the, I just wanna piggyback on that. One of the powerful things of reading recovery training is we were there every Tuesday. So, if you didn't get something one Tuesday, we were revisiting it the next week or sharing new ideas. This is what I did in my group, this didn't fail, didn't go right, it kind of failed, what should I be doing? So, it was that constant, and even now, I mean, we go every month, so it's great to have those conversations with colleagues.
And we wanna have our, our classroom teachers have the ability to have that experience as well in terms of professional development. When there is a thoughtful plan put in place for staff development, it helps all of us grow as, and it helps our understanding as a district on the many initiatives that are, that we're trying to put in place right now for classroom teachers. So, I, I think about how we've grown over the last year, and we want our staff to be on that journey with us. I also think about it from the point and perspective of an educator, the educator effectiveness system. And the first line of Charlotte Danielson's framework is all about planning and preparing for your instruction. And I think if we do a thoughtful job of that as classroom teachers, the product that we come away with as instructors is much more powerful, it's much more poignant, and our, our students are only going to benefit from that intentional time that we give them.
Thank you.
I think one of the biggest struggles that we have in the district is we have talent in front of us, but there's just not enough of them. One of the things that Andre and I are working on with the building principles is increasing the amount of coaching. Because we know that in the classroom, 85% of our students should be able to handle the curriculum. And so, we know that we need to do more work with our classroom teachers in supporting that literacy understanding. And that's where what they've learned in reading recovery is gonna be so powerful because we need to maximize and capitalize on that talent. And they've got such good hearts. When we say, "We need to coaching, we need to coaching, we need to coaching," they're always wanting to say, "Oh, but there's another kid that I need to help, there's another student, there's some kids coming in." And so, they walk that fine line because they want to help all kids get better and be wonderful readers, but at the same time, we want them to get into classrooms to support their literacy instruction. So, we're working on that. That's gonna be the ongoing challenge for us, and we brought Andre in because she's...
Hi, I'm Andrea.
She's our, our literacy coordinator, she's got some great, great, great background in coaching, along with literacy, of course, so we're gonna capitalize on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to key action items. Facility improvement plan and budget, totally opposite end of the spectrum. What are we doing here? Okay. Well, every year around this time, for budgeting purposes, we take a look at our five-year facilities, our five-year, our facilities improvement plan. It used to be five-year, now it's a 10-year plan. The important thing to remember when we examine the, the plan is that tonight, we're just basically focusing on the merits of each one of the projects and understand that you're not committing money to any of these projects at this particular time. So, that's an important thing to remember. The projects come from a list that has four or five years been on the plan and as they move forward. And so, tonight, the focus hopefully will be on our 16, 17 budget year and the projects that are listed on here. Certainly, if you have questions about anything that's put out in the future in the plan, you'll notice that each school has a tab that has a plan for each school. I did provide a 10-year project summary so that you can see how the projects line up, both with priority items and non-priority items, and then, again, our 16, 17 facilities improvement plan. So, again, the consideration is based on the merit of them, and you're not committing any budget dollars to these projects right now. So, with that, I'd love to entertain any questions about the 10-year plan.
I have a question about the, the change to exterior lighting to LED.
Okay.
And how that ties to camera system for exterior? Will the lighting levels be great enough that at night, you have the ability to recognize vehicles, color, license plate numbers, faces, any, any kind of outline of, of the individuals involved in any issue that would come up?
Yeah, and the answer to that is yes. We, we will still be able to monitor parking lots at the same levels we do right now. The benefit of the LED is that you can reduce the wattage used by each one of the fixtures by a significant amount, some, somewhere is up to, you know, 30 to 40%. And that's where that energy and ongoing savings happens. But, we can certainly increase the light levels with less wattage. It's dependent upon where the cameras are positioned, and a lot of times in the parking lots, it's the parking lot lighting that determines whether you're able to see through the camera system or not. But, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that, that our camera systems aren't affected by the changes to the LED fixtures.
And it's probably a bigger issue at the middle school and the high school, which get used more in the evenings and students in cars, things like that.
Correct. Those two buildings are more kind of 24/7 use buildings than the elementaries are.
Are we replacing the LED lighting because it needs replacing or just because it's less cost, less, or I mean?
No, there is a...
Common theme across the buildings.
Correct. There is a need at this particular time. Right now, for instance, when you take a look at our wall packs that are on the exterior of the buildings, you're seeing that the levels of the lights are degrading, you'll see yellowish-looking lights. What's happening is the lamps are failing as well as the ballasts. And so, what's gonna happen is we're gonna have to go up there and replace the ballast in addition to the lamp. So, the timing is, the timing is correct right now that if we're gonna make our replacements, do it now before we replace a lamp or a ballast, which we've been doing now for the last few years, we've been doing one here and one there. You can notice the difference in the light levels as you go through the building. So, to answer your question, Mark, now's a good time to do it. And it's not just to go to LED, but it's actually the correct in its timing.
Another question I have is, this next year, we have, one of the things we have is infilling the pool vessel and demo locker rooms. We've hired a consultant to go over that, and have we come up with plans yet for what we're gonna utilize, how we're gonna utilize that area and what's gonna change there?
We're close. We've been, I've been asking for about the last month, and Brander Technologies has actually just moved on to Hanson Road now. And I'm assuming that that might be some reason why I don't have it in my hand right now. But, we should have that within the next two weeks. I should have a good idea of some of the costs and some of the particular plans as it goes to laying out the future for the school district once we infill the pool.
So, what's the timeline to infill the pool? Let's say the pool's ready, the new pool's ready in October.
Well, I, I think our intent is to make sure that we infill that as soon as we can from a safety standpoint. We don't want that vessel to sit there empty. And so, I think the new pool, if it's on schedule, is scheduled to be opened in October. And at that time, it'll take a little bit to transition, water chemistry, filling that pool and whatnot. And so, as soon as that's taken care of, we will certainly plan to discontinue operating our current pool, just because of the energy savings that we would have by not running it. And then, hopefully, we'll have our plan in place and our project bid out so that we have real dollars to tell you what it's gonna cost to infill that pool. So, we're hoping to do that right away.
So, when you fill the pool, you're not putting a flooring in at this time, like placing tile or anything like that?
Our goal, what our goal is going to be is find the most cost-effective way to infill that pool and put a floor in that area, something that we can utilize either right away, depending on whatever that, whatever that room use is, if we're delayed in our future projects, relocations and things like that. We're hoping to make that a usable space, and so, it will have a floor in it.
So, the demo of the locker rooms would go hand-in-hand with that, or would that wait?
That, that would more likely wait. I think our focus is gonna be infilling that pool, but certainly, the master planning is gonna help determine what we need to do to prepare that demolition and what kind of infrastructure we need to put in that floor if we wanna move forward and however we do it.
One of the things that I think that we have to do, when I'm looking at this, the pool blanket and the capture system and some of those sort of things, I think that with the level of fundraising that we're doing, I think we can throw that, I think we should probably bring that back to the table as far as that fundraising committee goes. We've already done that with Mike and Allison at the Village. Talk to them about that, about if the money, the money from fundraising can be used to offset some of these costs and put some of these projects back into the project rather than the district. So, we're working on that.
Okay.
So, the purchase of the LED lighting for the new auditorium, that would be for the new pool, the new auditorium?
Correct.
Would be upgrades, right?
That would be part of the alternatives that were bid with the pool. It was bid with compact fluorescent and fluorescent lighting, and then we asked for an altern, an alternate for LED, and that's the cost based on the bids as they came back.
vehicles, color, license plate numbers, faces, any, any kind of outline of, of the individuals involved in any issue that would come up?
Yeah, and the answer to that is, yes. We, we will still be able to monitor parking lots, and it's at the same level as we do right now. The benefit of the LED is that you can reduce the wattage used by each one of the fixtures by a significant amount, some, somewhere is up to, you know, thirty to forty percent, and that's where that energy and ongoing savings happens. But we can certainly increase the light levels with less wattage. It's dependent upon where the cameras are positioned, and a lot of times, in the parking lots, it's the parking lot lighting that determines whether you're able to see through the camera system or not. But yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that, that our camera systems aren't affected by the changes to the LED fixtures.
Okay. And it's probably a bigger issue at the middle school and the high school, which get used more in the evenings, and students in cars, things like that.
Correct. Those two buildings are more kind of 24/7 use buildings than the elementaries are.
Are you, are we replacing the LED lighting because it needs replacing, or just because it's less cost, less, or I mean-
No, there is a-
Common theme across the buildings.
Correct. There is a need at this particular time, right now, for instance, when you take a look at our wall packs that are on the exterior of the buildings, you're seeing that the levels of the lights are degrading, you'll see yellowish looking lights. What's happening is the lamps are failing, as well as the ballasts. And so, what's going to happen is, we're going to have to go up there and replace the ballast in addition to the lamp. So, the timing is, the timing is correct right now, that if we're going to make our replacements, do it now before we replace a lamp or a ballast, in which we've been doing now, for the last few years, we've been doing one here and one there, you can notice the difference in the light levels as you go through the building. So, to answer your question, Mark, now's a good time to do it. And it's not just to go to LED, but it's actually the correct in its timing.
Another question I have is, this next year, we have, one of the things we have is infilling the pool vessel and demo locker rooms, and we've hired a consultant to go over that, and have we come up with plans yet for what we're going to utilize, how we're going to utilize that area, and what's going to change there?
We're close. We've been, I've been asking for about the last month, and Brander Technologies has actually just moved on to-
Hanson.
Hanson Road now. And I'm assuming that that might be some reason why I don't have it in my hand right now, but we should have that within the next two weeks, I should have a good idea of some of the costs, and some of the particular plans as it goes to laying out the future for the school district, once we infill the pool.
So, what's the timeline to infill the pool, let's say the pool's ready, the new pool's ready in October?
Well, I, I think our intent is to make sure that we infill that as soon as we can, from a safety standpoint, we don't want that vessel to sit there empty. And so, I think the new pool, if it's on schedule, is scheduled to be opened in October. And at that time, it'll take a little bit to transition, water chemistry, filling that pool and whatnot, and so, as soon as that's taken care of, we will certainly plan to discontinue operating our current pool, just because of the energy savings that we would have by not running it, and then, hopefully, we'll have our plan in place, and our project bid out, so that we have real dollars to tell you what it's going to cost to fill that pool. So, we're hoping to do that right away.
So, when you fill the pool, you're not putting a flooring in at this time, like placing tile or anything like that?
Our goal, what our goal is going to be, is find the most cost-effective way to infill that pool, and put a floor in that area, something that we can utilize either right away, depending on whatever that, whatever that room use is, if we're delayed in our future projects, relocations, and things like that. We're hoping to make that a usable space, and so, it will have a floor in it.
So, the demo of the locker rooms would go hand-in-hand with that, or would that wait?
That, that would more likely wait, I think our focus is going to be infilling that pool, but certainly, the master planning is going to help determine what we need to do to prepare that demolition, and what kind of infrastructure we need to put in that floor if we want to move forward, and however we do it.
One of the things that I think that we have to do, when I'm looking at this, the pool blanket and the capture system and some of those sort of things, I think that with the level of fundraising that we're doing, I think we can throw that, I think we should probably bring that back to the table, as far as that fundraising committee goes.
We've already done that with Mike and Allison at the village, talk to them about that, about if the money, the money from fundraising can be used to offset some of these costs, and put some of these projects back into the project rather than the district, so we're working on that.
Okay. So, the purchase of the LED lighting for the new auditorium, that would be for the new pool, the new auditorium?
Correct.
Would be upgrades, right?
That would be part of the alternatives that were bid with the pool. It was bid with compact fluorescent and fluorescent lighting, and then, we asked for an altern, an alternate for LED, and that's the cost, based on the bids as they came back.
What's the timing on the decision for that?
Decision for-
For that, that, that spending?
That actually has been decided already.
I think we committed to that one already.
Yeah, both the pool and the auditorium will be fully LED.
Okay.
It's going to happen one way or another, it just depends on how we want it, no, it depends on what we can fund, I guess, through the fundraising.
And when would that project start for the, for Cormier, for the parking lot of Cormier, any entryway?
Currently, we, we're working out the strategy for that. I believe, we did have the master planning done, and we got some budgetary numbers back, and the, the full scope of what we want to do at Cormier is a little bit cost prohibitive at this point, and so, I think what we're going to try to do is tackle replacing the existing parking lot that's there, which is in need of replacement, it's broken up, and I can't really do any more maintenance to it. So, I think our goal is going to be to resurface that particular part of the parking lot, and then maybe add another row on to that, at this particular point, which would be like a phase one.
Just so you know, our budget for this coming year is tighter than it's been in the last couple of years, and it, and we're just one of those projects that we're asking you to approve the plan, but as we bring the budget forward, and that's what Tom said, you're not committing budget dollars right now, we're committing, putting the plan into the budget, but when you see the budget cuts we need, that's one of the projects that we're looking at, and doing it in sections, or holding off on certain parts of it, because when the pricing came back, it was much more than what we have in the budget right now, and we're working, trying to find ways to do it more cost-effectively. But in addition, I'm not sure, when we look at budget decisions, if that's how we would choose to spend our money over something happening in the classroom, or, and can we, can we live with where we are right now, and just resurfacing that lot, and then have a future plan item to add some of the other things that we want into. It's a tough call, because it's a safety issue, in my opinion, and I think we need to make sure we're providing a safe environment, I think the staff at Cormier does an outstanding job of making a great situation out of a less-than-optimal setup, and I'd love to get to an optimal setup, but I, I think right now, where our budget is, I just have a feeling we're going to come back with a recommendation that we hold off on that as part of the budget.
Do we have money in this year's budget for that?
We have some money in this year's budget, and what Tom's talking about, where we would resurface the current lot, and maybe expand it a little bit, would be using the money from this year's budget. So, then the question is, do we appropriate the money next year, when we finally adopt our budget, to do the next step? And how much, and how much is that going to take? We recently got the cost estimates back from our, our planner, and to say I was shocked is an understatement, it, it blew me away how much more it was than what we had anticipated in their estimates, and we're working to try and bring that cost down.
Wasn't it eight hundred thousand?
It was over eight hundred thousand.
Is that because we're in an unfavorable bidding market right now?
That might have, it has something to do with it, the construction costs are just high everywhere, but it's, it's more than that, I think there, when you, when you add a lot more hard surface to an area, you've got to deal with water runoff and all those issues, the underlaying, and the changes you have to make, the change in traffic flows, just, like I said, we've got to work with that, with the designer, to see if there are ways to bring that into a more realistic price range, because at the price it came in, I can't support going forward with it, so unless we find a more cost-effective way to do, to accomplish our goal, I would anticipate that we'll be on hold on that project.
Other variables, the contingency money for the building projects, as Mark was alluding to, not only the fundraising, but if the project continues to go well, the contingency monies, we've kind of weighed in on that as well, we need a pool cover, we need the evacuator system, those are all building project issues, so why not consider, which would, you know, help us also, and so, it is a little bit of a chess game here, to see how, where things land.
And everything on those building projects is going well, that the contingency money for the most part is still in place on the auditorium pool, so we're optimistic there'll be some contingency money able to reduce those costs.
My recollection is that the Cormier project, unless I'm remembering wrong, has been put up quite a number of, am I-
You're right.
Right or wrong?
No, you're right.
I don't know specifically, but it feels like it.
I think we did, I think it was supposed, it was going to originally be done this past summer, and we held off because of budget constraints, and didn't have a solid enough plan, and construction costs going crazy the last couple of years, so we've held off, and we've got to find a way to do it in steps, so I think the first step is get that existing parking lot, so it's usable, and can handle the amount of cars that we need, and then we'll work on setting up a drive-up lane to have the parent drive-up drop-off separated from the park and drop-off areas, so we separate the walk-in traffic from the drive-up traffic, and then, we'll, then we'll talk to the village about separating the bus traffic then, and creating an area for the bus drop-off on Broadway, so those are all the stages we've looked at.
I see. I understand that it's come in quite a bit higher, but I also feel a little bit like we are moving forward in other areas of our district, and this is getting left behind.
Pushed back again.
Yeah.
So, the other things in all the other years, I mean, there are identified things that have to be done, you don't really, we don't have to get into them right now, or move them forward or backwards or anything, I mean, I think they're pretty self-explanatory, I've been through this lots of times.
Yeah. It's a look into the future, and based on some of the billing surveys, roofing surveys we've had done, expected life, and what we do is, we'll continue to look at those, and in many of those cases, those projects will extend out, but we want to be prepared, because we don't want to have a surprise building, repair of some sort that we can avoid.
That was the other question I had, and the LED lighting and everything, the, the reduction in, in energy usage that we save off of that, do we have to give that percentage to that company that we've hired?
No, we're no longer paying synergistic, or what used to be, company used to be energy at anything. They still provide the same support for the program, but once we committed our five-year, completed our five-year commitment, we no longer pay a fee to them.
Okay, so what, what do they project, all these LED lights and all these, did they give you-
They don't do that, but Focus on Energy has given us some numbers, and for the pool, the electrical engineer, Tom, do you remember what the last estimate was on the electrical engineer, when he said the pool and auditorium LED would save?
Focus on Energy, I think demonstrated like a sixty percent reduction in energy costs, specifically related to the lighting.
So, there alone, that would almost pay for the cost of the lighting within the year or two.
I think it was a three-year payback, or-
Yeah, yeah.
And then, to me, the, as big a savings with LED lighting is, the fact you don't have to go touch that fixture again for such a long time, and you think of the pool, how high those lights are up, and you have to have a lift and get up there, the amount of time it takes to change one light bulb in a pool is, is significant, so, and the same thing in the auditorium, where you're dealing with lights that are high up, so, that LED really makes the benefit, is time and labor as well, as the energy, so, there, it's double, double benefit.
So, we need to approve, approve this plan as presented, basically?
Yes, knowing that you haven't committed the funds to it, but you're approving it, so I will include it in the budget, in the first review of the budget, and then we'll come back with, as an administrative team, what reductions are necessary to balance our budget, so you're approving it, but not committing funds.
Are we approving the whole 10-year plan, then, even?
Yeah, approve the plan for now, it gives, it also gives staff, the building, some knowledge of, okay, this is something that, that we need to do at, at a particular building, it is in the plan, and they, they, they see it out there, so I think it's important that, so when someone asks us about something in particular, we'd say, yeah, that's two years out, or that's four years out, and they know we have a plan for it, I think it's-
I'll make a motion to approve the 10-year billing and maintenance plan, facilities improvement plan.
I'll second. And just a comment, just quickly, I mean, what it, what it says to the community, for anyone who's watching or listening, is that we're not pushing off and causing a deferred maintenance situation. And by planning and looking forward as much as 10 years, which is a long ways out, hopefully, we're setting ourselves up as a district to stay out of that situation of running into deferred maintenance, so, thanks for putting it all together.
No, thank you.
Anything else? All's a favor to motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Can I ask one more question before we move off the subject? We've had discussions at the board level about a fund that DPI has now set up, that has a five-year timeframe on, if, once we put money in, we can't touch it for five years. And we've talked about this at the board level a couple times, about putting some money in, it doesn't require board approval, but I guess I'd, I just want to know, we're considering making that deposit this month, and I'd like board thoughts on putting a small amount in there to start that five-year clock ticking, and then, my thought would be, at the end of the year, if we have a variance in the facilities budget, we would come to you in June, and whatever our variance is deposited in there, and then that would provide some future money to do some of those larger projects. If you look out, when you go past five years, you've got some roof sections and some other things, boilers that are going to need to be addressed, and those, if you look at some of those, I was surprised, those farther out years get significant, and this would allow us to start saving money when we have a good budget year, and we could also use utilities when we have a warm winter, like we have here, if we save money, we could put it in there, and reserve it for maintenance, and protect it from hurting our budget on the education side in future years.
So, what are you talking about, as far as dollar run?
I, it doesn't matter how big our initial deposit is, as far as the DPI is concerned, we could put one dollar in. I've talked to several financial institutions, and they're not thrilled about a bank account sitting there with one dollar in, so I think we need to put a little more than that, so we avoid getting hit with fees, and I'd like to make it an investment that earns some interest. So, my initial thought was, we would put five thousand dollars in it, that would be enough that we'd avoid all fees, and we could make it a money market account that gets a couple percent interest, and can start earning some money, and then in June, we'd come back and look at where our facility budget is, and propose moving in any unspent money from the facility budget.
Once you put money in there, can it be used for any thing when you take it out, in five years?
Any maintenance project, it has to be facility site-related.
Okay.
But there hasn't been a year where we've had under a budget in those maintenance items of three or four hundred thousand dollars, so I, I don't think there's any risk that five years from now, we won't have a use for that money, it's just a matter of this allows us to create a savings account, reserve some money.
I think it's a pretty good idea, because I know in ten or twelve years from now, we're going to be replacing a football field.
What is, what is the-
Money saved for that.
What is the financial, like, I mean, are we going to be, what is that we tax right now, are we going to get taxed more on it in the future, or less?
If you look at our history, as far as our negative aid percentage, I think that's where you're going, our negative aid percentage has gone up pretty steep slope, meaning we're losing more aid for every incremental dollar we spend, so I think we're better off from an aid picture right now, to put it in and be aided on the, the transfer to that account today than we would be five years from now. I think that's the question you're asking.
Yep, exactly.
I can't predict what's going to happen, but I know the state budget hasn't improved much for schools in recent history, so I don't expect it.
Well, I know that, that when the TIFs come offline, is when we get a big hit that is going to take a big dive, and I know within 10 years, we've got at least one, if not two, TIFs coming offline, so I mean, start preparing for it now, I guess. So, you don't need a-
No, I don't need a motion, and I, as long as I'm not hearing anybody saying, "Don't start that account, start the five-year clock ticking," I will go ahead and make a minimal deposit that allows us to get a good account set up with everyone's interest.
Okay.
Anything else, Tom?
Not from my end. If you certainly, if you have any questions in the future, just let me know, I'd be happy to support whatever questions you have.
What do you do with the old cafeteria lunchroom tables you're getting rid of? I'm curious.
Um, that's a good question. Sometimes we'll, we'll put them on like the Craigslist, or we'll offer them up, or sometimes we'll donate them to a, maybe a school that can't afford to buy tables.
They usually don't have a lot of life left in them when we're-
No, I was just curious if another school could use them.
We, we share them around between the buildings before we would do anything else, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, we'll move on to technology, two, technology plan budget. Jamie and Scott. It's a good thing you didn't have to have Brad come over there and plug that in.
I almost called for help.
All right, similar to, Tom, we're just going to kind of share with you guys the 16, 17 budget, Scott's actually going to go over it more in detail, then I'll kind of talk on the impact, and then, so without, I'll shut up, which is really hard for me to do, so.
Okay, I guess the first thing I want to start off with is, this budget doesn't have any, any new equipment, it's basically maintenance of existing, or replacement of existing equipment, there's no new additions. So, I have everything kind of split up into four quadrants, we have infrastructure, which would be our servers, our network, things like that, internet, which is our firewall and content filtering, hardware is end-user devices, so that would be Chromebooks, laptops, things along those lines, and then services are costs that we pay for licensing of software, warranties, consulting, things like that. So, this is our breakdown for this year, which the total comes to about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which I'll go into a little bit more detail here. So, the first part is infrastructure, the, the last school to upgrade for wireless and switching is the high school, so those are the first two items, Parkview needs a, a new UPS, which is a backup power supply in there, and then, storage for our servers. The first three items are E-rate eligible, so, in the past, you, the federal government would subsidize our internet connection, which is based off your free and reduced allowance, so for us, it comes to about fifty percent. Last year, they decided that in addition to providing E-rate funding or reimbursements for internet connections, they were going to do it for category-two equipment, which are things like wireless access points and switching, and things like that. So, the nice thing about that is, these three items right here, come out to about a little over a hundred thousand dollars, and we're going to get fifty percent of that back, in a, from a, in a check from the federal government, basically, so, we basically have a fifty thousand dollar savings right off the bat, which is kind of nice. Internet, this is just for existing, we, last year, we bought a new content filter and firewall, and we amortized it across five years, so, that, that's just the cost of the, the second year, and then the Kajit mobile hotspots, we provide those to students that don't have internet at home, we buy these Kajit wireless hotspots, which basically gives them internet at home, it's just a little device they bring home with them, so that they can do their schoolwork at home. This is the end-user hardware, so, the things we're looking at replacing next year are high school business ed laptops, there's thirty, there are iMac lab, the Macs are about five years old, we're looking at replacing those. The high school have Promethean boards, this is a smart board, but they have, it's similar concept, we're looking at replacing those a little bit at a time, last year, we replaced three, this year, we're going to finish up that department with five. The art staff at the high school need their laptops replaced. The big one is the Samsung Chromebooks, we have about eight hundred and two Samsung Chromebooks throughout the district, that currently, their end-of-life is October of two thousand and sixteen. So, that's a date that Google sets, where they're basically say that after that date, there's no guarantee that they're going to provide updates for that device anymore. So, we're looking at getting those replaced this year, so that we don't have issues next year. We're optimistic that the end-of-life will go beyond that date, but we, we don't know for sure, so that's the big thing there. And then, just kind of a little side fund, in case we have projector issues. Over the past years, I think you guys have remembered, we had big projector projects to get projectors in every classroom, some of those projectors are getting to be, I think, three to five years old in the range, so this is just a little bit of money we're setting aside in case we have issues. I think so far, we've had one, one or two projectors fail, so. And then services and support, I won't go into the boring details on this one, but like I said, it's licensing, warranties, maintenance, things like that, just the things that kind of keep the wheels moving behind the scenes.
So, this is where I get to talk, one of the things that keeps us alluded to, is that as we start looking at this upcoming budget year, we always talk, you know, what could be potential cuts. So, Scott and I did go through our budget, and, and if you look at that six, six sixty-nine presented in the past, that's a pretty low number for us, we, as Scott alluded to, we've really leaned out this budget to be basically trying to replace what we currently have. But if we would look at potential cuts, one of the things we could talk about is those Kajit mobile hotspots, we have about twenty-three of them, I think, in the district right now, one in the Jaguar, actually twenty-five total, but twenty-three that are in the hands of students, and we have between nineteen and twenty of them that are checked out, kind of on cycle. So, that's a service we provide for our students who don't have internet at home, but that's an eighty-five hundred dollar cost to that, so, that's a struggle, because obviously, I'm not, I would like to have that for our kids. The high school social Promethean replacements, as Scott alluded to, we have a lot of them at the high schools, who are trying to kind of roll them all into smaller chunks, we can wait, but it's a waiting game that, it's dangerous, because, you know, if we don't replace five this year, then it's, what's going to happen next year and the year after that. The rest are Chromebooks, and that's a scary game to play, because as Scott said, right now, there is this end-of-life, now, there has yet to be an educational device that Google's actually gone to end-of-life, this is one of the first ones, so we're a little nervous what Google's going to do, we're hoping that they'll extend it to seventeen or beyond, but right now, every time, like, for example, the Wisconsin Forward test that we do on our, on our Chromebooks, it requires an updated version of Google Chrome. So, if our Chromebooks are end-of-life, and they don't have that version, we don't, now we, we have eight hundred and two Chromebooks in our testing devices, which- which is something that's very scary for us to try to help we, how we'd overcome that. Now, one of the things we're going to try to do is that, we do have some flexibility. Scott talked about E-rate later. We did have a lot of, of, of category-two that was E-rate eligible this year, and it's.
It's about eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand. What we're going to try to do as we are starting to hopefully collect those checks soon, is try to pre-buy some of this stuff at, with this year's E-rate money, so it's off of next year's budget, if we can, things like Chromebooks potentially. Um, the other talk is, you know, right now, with all these Chromebooks, we have a one-to-one situation, eighth grade and fifth grade and two-to-one in other buildings. You know, as we have discussions about budget, we might have to have a talk about that. I mean, obviously, we would like to have as much access for our students as possible. But as, as, um, as Brian talked about earlier, um, we start talking about people and programs, well, we can talk about how this device is fitted and have a discussion of that. So to show you the next five years, though, as we cut, we're not really cutting, we're pushing. And these next years have some pretty big numbers. We have like our staff laptops, we have some other hardware. So if we push two hundred thousand on the next year, that puts next year's budget at a million dollars. That's, that's a big number. So that's the hard part about technology cuts. They're not really cuts, they're more just pushes.
I just want to make sure I'm, that we're clear, the board understands, all five years of this, there's not new equipment being added. This is all maintaining and replacing existing equipment. So last four or five years, we've been adding, increasing our number of devices. This is strictly a maintaining what we've got.
Last year, we actively reduced about three, just about three hundred devices last year. We reduced a ton of desktop computers, if you guys remember that. We eliminated a lot of our desktop labs. Last year was a reduction year. This year, we're trying to kind of do a statusful replacement.
Jimmy, how many of the, the Chromebooks are the one-on-one program at the high school?
Well, at the high school, we have about just over four hundred and forty. Um, we have a hundred kids, oh, about sixty percent bringing their own device.
How much of a rental income do we get off of that?
Seventy-five dollars. Well, it's not even, it's, you know, thirty percent or, well, it's, I, I, actually, with, with our free and reduced waivers, I, I, I can't give you a full number on that. But I would, it's seventy-five dollars per, if they all were, but we, a lot of those, I would say a third are waivers. I, I could, I could find out.
So we, we didn't filter that down to the Parkview, then?
We haven't, because at, at Parkview, um, we don't give them the options. We don't charge the fee to bring your own device. We can do that. It gets a little murky with SIP laws about, um, filtering content. Because you have, at the middle school, you have a situation where you have kids over thirteen and under thirteen. So protecting content, when you bring on, when you bring your own device, we have, there's a lot of other things we have to do from a protection standpoint, for me to feel comfortable with. We, we, some of we definitely could talk about and look into, because then if we're going to charge a fee, I think we should give them the option to bring their own device, and there's a lot of districts that do it. But then you get to a lot of policy of, of, of how you filter and the content at that level.
Is Chromebook still the best option for us?
Um, yeah, I would say so. For the, the, the amount of buying that we have for Google After Education and the use that we have, it is, um, the, actually, I don't want to say it's G, it's most cost-effective way to get there. And it's, 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 it's a way for us to provide a lot of access for our students. And the Chromebooks we bought, the, the Lenovo Chromebooks that we have at the eighth grade one-to-one, the high school one-to-one, um, I mean, something wood and not gun. We're like in less than three percent breakage. So they've really, we've, we purposely bought a device that was meant to be for one, for one-to-one going home. We bought a substantial device, and you get what you pay for, which we're glad that we have, because the amount of breakage we have has been minimal compared to what we've had in previous devices.
Compared to the netbooks we've seen.
Correct, yeah. So that's, 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 and that's, that's another thing that we've talked about on this budget. We're trying to replace the Samsungs that we have with that same Lenovo product. There are lesser Chromebooks that we could buy. But that's scary, because again, you get what you pay for, and we know that Lenovo's that we buy right now have lasted and we, our tax knows them quite well and we can service them. We have the issues. We could, we could buy a machine that's thirty percent less cost, but I don't, but it's, it's hard to measure than what's the, the total cost ownership on something like that.
Another factor, Jamie, is we have to be mindful of the, the state assessments and the tools we're going to use for those, I mean, that's another.
Well, and that's, that's the unique thing too, so yeah, good point of Brian. You know, the high school, we have sixty percent bring your own device. But when we have to actually test at the high school, we have to leverage every single lab we have, because we can't test on the bring your own devices. Most would require a pushout of some kind of application to take the test. So that gets a little, schedules.
I have considered the end-of-life scenario with Chromebook when we decided to go that route. Do they have a guarantee for something you'd buy next year, how long?
Yeah, for example, our Lenovas, I think, are through, I don't, something.
I don't remember.
Twenty-one or twenty-two. Most of them, most of them are a four- and five-year lifecycle. Um, the issue is, is that we bought the Samsungs about halfway through their lifecycle. Um, they came out with the Samsung, the next generation, I think a year and a half after we bought all of ours, and that's when they turned cycles. I'm, due to the fact of the number of Samsungs, that model we have, is a, it's a very popular model at schools. I'm anticipating Google will extend the life. Um, the issue is the processor, they have two gig of RAM. Our new ones have four gig of RAM. They're also, there's a reason why we were scheduled to replace them. We weren't, the end of life was one of the reasons, but that wasn't the only reason we were scheduled to replace them. We, we would like to get a better machine. It's something we learned with, with the netbooks. The longer we push, it becomes a situation where we have eight hundred and two boom anchors.
And we had that with the netbooks when we started the school year, and we had to quickly replace them with Chromebooks, because the netbooks just weren't working anymore. They'd reached their end of life and that was their end of life.
That was like four years, right? Did they get four years?
Netbook, I, I think we tried to push them five.
I think we tried, yeah, the, the, decided they weren't going to work.
Boy, I feel, man, oh, right.
The difference is, though, I mean, the cost, I mean, the, the cost of the Lenovas are just over three hundred dollars, which is crazy when you think about how much we paid those, the netbooks would have cost we bought them. I think we're, the total, the purchase.
Forty-nine bucks, weren't they?
Seven hundred, three, I whatever, then, well, we got it through, we got it through that cellular deal. But if we would have bought them outright, it would have been, it's crazy how the cost of those devices goes down every year.
Speaking of Chromebooks.
Mm-hmm.
And life, life of computers.
Mm-hmm. We are in the process, um, over spring break, of switching over to Gmail, which.
What is this all in, I mean, I read the, the thing, but it's like, I didn't even talk about it, really.
Sure. So one of the things that we've been looking at is, we, we've worked with a third-party vendor about how do we transition over to Google, or to Gmail for our, for our mailing system. And there's kind of two parts of it. I'll let Scott talk about the resource and cost part. But from an education side of it, as I alluded to before, we have a huge buying of Google After Education. So right now, we have a lot of teachers that use Google Drive, Google Docs, Google Classroom, and they share and they collaborate, and they have to use their Google account to do that. And especially six-twelve, they do a lot of sharing with students, and that's this own separate Google account, Google login, Google password. And now we have our Outlook email password, and we kind of have two separate systems. By going to Gmail, we can take all of this and forward, migrate it all over to a single system, so it's one username, one password, one email system.
But can't you do that right on the air?
You can, absolutely. Um, now, the difference is, is that these are getting close to end of life.
They're beyond end of life.
So, once we move over to Gmail and Google Drive for board documents, a Chromebook will, will fly in comparison to these.
There's six Chromebooks sitting on the desk in the tech office, for each, one for each of you.
So we don't have to wait like an hour and a half for updates?
Nope.
Correct.
Correct.
Your timing's a little off, just so you know.
Yeah, but then from a cost side, there's, I was, there's some cost, because you've got maintenance and servers up going, go over to Gmail. Um, the biggest thing is the archiving, where we're required to keep all of your emails for seven years. Well, for Google, archiving's free. Right now, we pay a lot of, of, of space and maintenance on that. Spam filtering's free. So those are costs, ongoing costs that we no longer have to, have to pay for because of our Google After Education or DPI.
Okay. So are we having a, we're having another workshop in March?
Correct, that's just us, we get to watch.
Oh, you hear this?
Yes.
Hear this?
So that'll be the, you get a prize for that. You get a new Chromebook for that one.
And you'll learn how to use the agenda, and it won't be in this one.
I like this format. I know.
Mark, wait, did we not just talk about technology?
Some remedial training for Mark.
Yeah.
When you open the Chromebook for the first time and you see how fast it boots, you'll be glad you switched. Because it's literally like you open the screen and you're ready to go.
So to pull it all together again, um, our initial plan and our plan over the next five years is to sustain what we have. We did our due diligence to make it as lean as we could, knowing that, um, it's the year where we're going to have to look at potential cuts. And, and I, I, obviously, it's hard, because any cut is really just a push, and as you can see, there's.
What was the threshold key? What was the budget?
For sixteen-seventeen?
Fifteen, six, this year?
Yeah.
It was like four hundred seventy-two thousand, I think. And, and so traditionally, in the past, it had been about eight hundred thousand a year. And then last year, it dropped down to four seventy-two. But what kind of saved us last year was, was the prior school year, we had some carryover money. I want to say we had about two hundred thousand in carryover. So we pre-bought a bunch of stuff in the, in the school year before that. Plus, we cut quite a few devices last year by not replacing a lot of labs, so that saved us quite a bit of money. Now, this year, we'll have some carryover money. Right now, I'm at about eighty thousand, but I still have, you know, the rest of the school year to go, so I'm, I'm probably going to have less than that. But then we have that E-rate money that we'll be getting back eighty thousand for this school year, so we can pre-buy. And then next year, you could basically cut it by about fifty, based on what we're going to get back, so.
So once again, you're not committing budget dollars, but you're saying you support the plan, I'll work the plan and the budget. And then when we come back for budget approval and we're balancing the budget, some of these items will show up on the list as possible budget reductions.
Okay.
So do you need, do you, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the technology budget as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All's a favor to motion, please say aye.
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 Pose. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, Board of Superintendent Communications, do you have nothing right now?
I just had, I had one quick item. I was at a, a meeting about two weeks ago in the evening, and I ran into a parent who said he had to leave to get to an activity. And I said, oh, what was the activity? And he had two kids involved in high school sports. And, uh, and I said, so just out of curiosity, because, because he said he was going to Ashwabanon. And I said, so are, are you, do you live at Ashwabanon, or do you, school choice? And he said, oh, we school choice. And I, I, so I, I, he didn't know that I was a school board member, but I, I just kind of kept prodding him along and had, kind of fishing for information. And, um, and they live in, uh, Ledge View, which was a East DePere. And they, uh, he and his wife, that is, um, had done a lot of analysis on East DePere when their kids were in middle school. And they made the decision, based on our, um, high school programs, um, education programs, to come to Ashwabanon. And, uh, and he had nothing but great things to say about the experience the kids have had. And I think they're freshmen and sophomore, two kids, um, a boy and a girl. And I couldn't even tell you what his name is. All I know is that he wa, he couldn't stop gushing about how happy they were that they made the decision several years ago to come to Ashwabanon, so.
There's a few smart ones out there.
Yeah, there you go. Always good to fish for information.
Okay, if there's, uh, let's see, future board meeting topics, first of all, if there's any topics, or does anybody have anything that they want to see on a future board meeting?
I, we had talked about it a couple of meetings ago, about, uh, the library of the future.
I talked to Mike, and Mike isn't present yet. He said he just became part of the committee.
Okay.
He doesn't have all these meetings.
Okay.
He was supposed to come tonight.
Okay, well, yeah, it doesn't, I'm not saying it needs to be like in the next meeting or two, but just whenever, it sure would be nice to see what, um, what the thinking is.
Sure. Okay. A board workshop is scheduled for Monday, March fourteenth, here at six o'clock, for training on the new email system and board agenda format. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March fourteenth at six-thirty, right here at the district office. So they must think that we're going to pick up on this really, really great.
Absolutely.
Thirty minutes. Need a motion to go to executive session, so. Roll call, roll please.
Vandy Creek, aye?
Laura, an aye.
Vandy, aye.
Laura, a aye.
Williams, aye. We take five here and.
Four of twenty-five.